Hello, everybody.
Yeah, we're just, as I say, we're just pausing to let a few more people in. We had, I think, something like 112 registered and about 60 are in so far. So we're just going to give it another two minutes to see how many more can get in. Good evening, everyone. My name is councillor Andrew Sanger and I am the Chair of this local area committee. I would like you to welcome to this online consultation event. This evening's event is being held to report back details of the public consultation on the local area community plan for the South West Lac and to give you, the public, an opportunity to consider these initial findings, test their validity and identify any gaps. The event is being held online because of the current ongoing situation with Covid and the need to protect the public, members and staff. Before we start, there are just a few housekeeping arrangements to mention for this online event. I will hand over to my colleague, John Turner, from Democratic Services to set out the details.
Good evening, everyone. In terms of housekeeping, the event is being conducted using Zoom as the virtual platform and will be livestreamed for the public to view via the council's public iWebcasting site. This will mean that the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council website. You should be aware that the authority is a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collected during the webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's data retention policy. Therefore, by entering the virtual meeting room, you are consenting to being filmed and to the use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting. If members of the public do not wish to have their image captured, they should turn their camera off. Alternatively, you can leave the virtual meeting room and watch the live webcast from the council's meetings' webpages. We have a high number of attendees, so to help the meeting run as smoothly as possible, it is important that all participants in the virtual meeting room have their microphone on mute for the duration of the meeting. At the appropriate part of the meeting, you will be able to indicate the wish to speak by using the raise hand function. The chair will let you know when this is. Please only unmute when the chair invites you to speak. This will help reduce the scope for noise interference. To assist with the smooth flow of the meeting, the chat facility is not available. May I also suggest that all mobile phones and similar devices are switched to silent in order to remove the potential for disturbance when speaking at the meeting. Also, please ensure that you have an appropriate background. Thank you in advance for your cooperation on this. One final thing to mention, a live transcript of the meeting is available by clicking on the live captioning button on your toolbar. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, John. We have a running order for the meeting, but before we proceed with this, I would like to explain how the meeting will work. So if John could display the agenda?
Denise, have you got the agenda with the...? Thank you, the timing is on.
Oh, sorry, it's... Yeah, there it is. I was shortly asked the councillors for the South West Lac and the officers to introduce themselves. We will then have a presentation from the area manager to report back on the initial findings from the public consultation on the Lac community plan. After this, we will break into groups to discuss the different themes that have arisen. I will explain how these breakout groups will work when we get to that item. After the breakout room discussions, we will give an overview of the main discussion points from each group. We will collate all the details after the meeting to inform the final version of the plan. There will then be an opportunity for public questions. I will explain how this will work when we get to this item. And finally, I will sum up and outline the next steps. So, item two, introductions. Can I now ask councillors and officers to introduce themselves? I'll call out their names in the order they are on my screen and ask them to unmute and introduce themselves. So can start with Cliff.
Hello, I'm Cliff Woodcraft and I'm one of the councillors for Fullwood.
Tim?
I'm Tim Huggan and I'm a councillor for Crooks and Crosspool.
And Stu?
I'm Sue Alston and I'm one of the other councillors for Fullwood.
Colin?
Councillor Colin Ross, councillor for Doran Totley Ward.
Ruth?
Hello, Rhys Nelson, a councillor in Crooks and Crosspool Ward.
Martin?
Hi, I'm Martin Smith, I'm a councillor for Doran Totley.
Roger?
Hello, I'm Roger Davison, I'm councillor for Ecclesall Ward.
Barbara? You're muted, Barbara.
Sorry, I did press it. Hi, I'm councillor Barbara Masters, councillor for Ecclesall Ward.
Jo?
Hi, I'm Jo Watson, councillor for Doran Totley and Vice Chair of this area committee.
Okay, and officers, John?
Evening, everyone, I'm John Turner from Democratic Services.
Nick?
Hi, Nick Hamilton, Head of Communities, responsible for the South, South East and South West Lacs.
Mubarak?
Hi, I'm Mubarak Hassan, South West Lac.
Denise?
Hi, everyone, I'm Denise Devoto, I'm the South West Lac manager.
Thank you all very much. I will now go to item three and I'll hand over to Denise Devoto, the area manager, to give a presentation.
Thank you, Chair. You can just bear with me a second, please, and I'll just share my screen. Apologies, everyone, having difficulty sharing the screen. Okay, can everyone see that? Okay. Okay. Good evening, everyone, it's good to see so many of you on the event and we're looking forward to hearing your views and questions as we go through it. As councillor Sanger has said, I'm going to present to you what the current draft of the South West Lac Committee Plan, Lac Community Plan is. In the presentation, I'll let you know what the results of the survey were and how we have arrived at the priorities that we are proposing. Could I ask if anyone has any questions about the presentation to either ask them in their breakout session, please, or as part of the public questions at the end due to the limited time that we have available? You may also find it useful to make some notes on the themes that you will be discussing in your breakout section as the presentation is unable to be shared in there, so you may want to refer back to some of your notes. Okay. So just to give you an overview, we've broken the plan into five key sections, which is a brief explanation as to what Lacs are, information about the South West, how we engage with the South West and what we found through our engagement and the surveys that you all completed. And we will also be sharing with you what we feel the results of the survey have told us to set some initial priorities. The local area committees are a way for people to get involved in making a difference to their local communities. Some budgets have already been devolved to the Lacs for them to be used on issues and priorities that residents and communities have told us are important to them. Lacs are a chance for people to influence decision-making and share your views. Apologies, the slide has skipped along there. The next part of my presentation is where we have the details of the councillors. On this slide and the next slide, you will see all 12 councillors that are listed. We have Andrew Sanger, who is our Lac Chair, and Jo Watton, who is the Doran Totley councillor, who's our Vice Chair. Next slide is just an introduction for the team and then you can see on there we've included all the information for our social media links and our webpage and our contact details. Okay. So, the South West is one of the seven Lacs in the city and consists of Crooks and Crosspool, Doran, Totley, Ecclesall and Fullwood. On this slide, I'm not going to go into too much detail about it, but basically it has the demographics that we have for the South West area. Some of the information has come from the census that was done in 2011 and some has come from more up-to-date information that we have by local insider reports. Once the results of the census for '21 are known, we will update this page accordingly. The next couple of pages tell us about the engagement that we did. I'm not going to go into them in detail due to time, but I would like to say that the South West Lac and the team are very committed to engaging with our communities in the area. Engagement will be a continuous part of the role and it doesn't just finish as of today. Your comments, your feedback and your ideas are an integral part of what our work will be going forward. Moving on to the survey, we had 1,303 people that responded to the survey in the South West. As you can see on the slide, it shows you the percentages of where the respondents lived in the area. On this particular slide, this gives demographic information about 1,303 people in the South West. Again, due to time, I won't go into the information in detail, but it is important that I advise you that whilst this gives us information about the people that have responded, the South West Lac will consider all the demographic information that's available to help inform any decisions that they will make on how budgets are spent on the priorities identified for the area. Okay, so very briefly, we have some of the Lacs that respondents said that they liked about the area. As we know, the South West is a very green part of the city. We're very lucky with our parks and our green spaces. We're close to the Peak District. People liked friendly neighbours, the good community atmosphere, good schools, et cetera. We also have on here some of the improvements that people said they wanted to see in the area. Public transport was a key area, stopping speeding vehicles, improving recycling options and improving street maintenance, et cetera. Okay, so on this particular slide, we asked the question of, you know, how happy were people living in the area? The vast majority of people were happy. On the right-hand side, we asked the question, how easy is it to find out about activities and events in your local area? You can see there, we've had a large percentage of people, about 28% of people, said it was hard or very hard. So this is something we need to consider on how we can improve this and make sure that we can get the information out into our communities. Okay. So, part of the survey, people were asked to tell us three things that they liked about the area and tell us three things that they wanted to see improved. We've grouped the Lacs and improvements into eight key areas, which are community and neighbourhoods, parks and open spaces, transport and highways, local environment, children, young people and families, community safety and crime, business, employment and skills and health and wellbeing. On each graph, we've ordered them to show the highest numbers first. For the improvements, we've done this so that we can see how many of the 1,303 people said they felt where greater improvements were needed. So, for example, you can see in the improvements graph, transport, we had 1,232 people that gave a very clear message that this was one of the priorities for the area that we needed to consider. Okay. So moving on, what the priorities are that we've asked you to register for the breakout sessions. Based on the feedback that we've had and the results, we felt it was appropriate to group them into transport and highways, local environment and community and neighbourhoods. Sorry, just bear with me a second. Apologies, everyone, I just need to go back a slide, it's moved on. Okay. So under this theme, for transport and highways, we grouped the comments that we received into three key areas. The first area being issues that were caused by transport, such as problem parking, speeding, traffic calming, low-traffic neighbourhood and heavy goods vehicle routing. We also grouped it into general issues with transport, where we have such as traffic volume, more parking required as opposed to problem parking and generally highways improvements that we needed, along with specific local improvements and electric parking required and fewer motoring restrictions. The final category was the public transport and active travel. As you can see, public transport there again received a high proportion of the comments for improvement. We also had safer routes, including crossings, cycling routes and active travel. So on the next slide, for local environment, under this, we've included some of the suggested improvements for our parks and our green spaces as they are important to contribute into the areas of the local environment that we live in. People also wanted to see improvements to waste collection, have greater recycling facilities. They wanted to see trees better maintained and more planted, as well as better clearing of autumn leaves and improved cleaning and maintenance of the streets. Some people also wanted footpath improving, they wanted them repairing more quickly and for the streetlights to be less bright at night, particularly after midnight. Under community and neighbourhoods, we included some of the suggested improvements linked to community safety and crime. A large percentage of people really like the good atmosphere and community spirit in the area, but loneliness and isolation is a key issue that many older people experience. So there is a desire to see this addressed. There's also a desire to see more support to be given to community groups, increasing community assets such as libraries and improving local amenities like local shops and businesses. People also wanted to see increased police patrols and a reduction in crime, including tackling antisocial behaviour in parks and the wider area. The larger section there, we had comments about reducing house building and reviewing the planning process. Okay. So on the next few slides that I'm going to talk through, these are priorities that we've identified and some of the current ideas that we've had that we can help resolve some of these issues. However, as I said earlier, it's really important that we hear your ideas and your views. We will be asking you in the workshops, you know, what do you think we can do to resolve some of the issues that we want to address in the area? So currently for transport and highways, we're looking at road safety, including implementation of 20 mile per hour zones in appropriate areas, installation of new vehicle-activated signs in all wards and to review where new crossings are required. With regards to public transport, we will be using our influence to improve bus services and also improving bus shelters and the information by liaison with the appropriate organisations. Additionally, we will be exploring traffic and parking to reduce inappropriate parking, explore resident parking schemes and encourage enforcement activity to prevent inappropriate parking. And we will also be exploring cycling and active travel, such as identifying safe cycling routes and safe parking for cycles, but also to identify and remove the barriers that actually prevent people being more active in their choice of travel and actually, you know, opting to use their car instead of public transport, for example. With regards to the local environment, the priorities that we have so far are waste, rubbish and bins. So other options, the ideas are to increase the recycling options that we have, particularly for some of the, you know, the additional plastics, et cetera, that many of us can't recycle at the moment or find difficult to recycle. We want to explore options for more communal bins and notices, particularly in parks for dog fouling. Street environmental cleaning and maintenance will be a priority. And we're looking at ideas for supporting voluntary litter picking groups in the area. We have some great groups already in the area, so, you know, that support is very important that we do target that where it's needed. And we want to raise awareness of reporting mechanisms for street and highways issues. Additionally, parks, green and open spaces is another priority. And to do this, we will support the Friends of Parks groups across the area. Again, we have some fantastic Friends groups across the area that have achieved huge amounts on behalf of the community and working in conjunction with our parks team. We'll be looking to update and renew, and the renewal of play and fitness activities for all age ranges and finally encouraging wildflower planting. Local environment continued. Again, we have priorities of street scene, footpaths and lighting. So ideas there are, we're looking at ideas to keep the footpath clear of encroaching plants and hedges that overhang, et cetera, and block people's access. Exploring the ability to dim streetlights in specific areas and reviewing the gritting routes and where the grit bins are located in the area. Trees and leaves, we will be looking at how we can improve the leaf clearance in late autumn as well as better maintenance of trees. And finally, flight ignorance and graffiti. We will be working to identify hotspots that we need to address in the area and also address some of the issues that the councillors have been made aware of at local bring sites. Okay, and moving on to the last theme for community and neighbourhoods. The priorities on this slide, at the moment, we have reducing the antisocial behaviour, youth gangs and nuisance in the area. And to do this, we're looking to work with young adults to help meet their aspirations in the local area and develop a scheme of activities. We'll also explore through our sustainable community officers to map out the hotspots, to target resources where appropriate to support the police in the area. We will work to reduce crime and address the perception and fear of crime across the area through working with the police to raise awareness on prevention of crime and antisocial behaviour. And we will support communities to set up and maintain neighbourhood watch groups. Again, we have some great groups in the area that really help and are really valued in their communities. And we will work with the university to support students to reduce crime in their communities. Additionally, we'll learn from best practice for high-quality public spaces that design out crime in the areas. Finally, as part of community and neighbourhoods, we really want to encourage community involvement. Our communities are what may, you know, really help bond groups and people together. So we will provide support to establish new community groups where a need is identified. We'll continue to work with the People Keeping Well team to support and identify isolated individuals as well as raising awareness for volunteering opportunities for all. And we'll finally support the increasing of the use of the community assets that we have, such as libraries and community buildings. To do this, we'll promote the assets that we have and increase their use as well as encouraging the use of libraries as community hubs. Okay. So just on to the last slide, what happens next with the South West Lac? Well, we will continue to work with Lacs across the city to determine which further powers and budgets can be devolved to Lacs. We will be holding four public meetings per year and provide an update on the progress of the community plan. The next one is planned for the 17th of March to agree a final plan. Covid permitting, that will be in person. We really hope that, you know, we can go ahead with that. We will also hold single-issue meetings on topics of local interest where and when appropriate, which may be area-wide specific or they may be ward-specific. We'll continue to engage and consult with communities to review the priorities for the area and will provide an annual report on the community plan and progress against it to full council every year. Lastly, we will represent the interest of its communities with the council and other bodies and organisations as appropriate to achieve the objectives of the community plan. Thank you all for listening and I hope it demonstrated where we are currently with regards to the drafting of the community plan. And we are looking forward to receiving your comments and feedback to help us shape it further. I will now pass back to our Chair for the next part of the event.
Thank you. Thank you, Denise. We will now move to the breakout room discussions. Everyone has been pre-allocated to a breakout room based on the preference they indicated when they registered. There will be a councillor designated as a facilitator in each room who will help lead and manage discussions and there will also be a note taker. The main purpose of these sessions is to allow us to consult with you as members of the public to relay some of our initial findings and test their validity and identify any gaps. We're very keen to hear from as many people as possible within the group and we politely ask that people try not to dominate the discussion, preventing others from contributing. Things we'd like you to consider. The presentation highlighted the main issues that have been identified through consultation. Are these correct? Have we missed anything? We would like to agree priorities based on our discussions today. What would you like to see as outcomes? So we've got some priorities, but we clearly would like so some outcomes so we can address these issues. And how would you or other partners you know like to be involved in finding solutions to these challenges? These breakout sessions will run for 45 minutes. Please do not leave the breakout room until the host brings you back into the main meeting. I will now ask the host to set up the rooms. This may take a few minutes, so please can I ask you for your patience to give us a little time to make these arrangements? Please note that whilst we have asked you to select a theme you wanted to share your views on, we still welcome feedback on the other themes, which you can send into the team by email or call them to discuss. So, yes, you're only going to be in one group now, but please, please feel free to put your comments in into email to the team. Right. Let's go into the breakout rooms. See you in 45 minutes.
Councillor, can I...? I didn't apply for one, I missed it. Can I join the environment one?
Welcome back. Just going to leave it a few seconds for all, all seven groups to get back in here. Okay, I think, I think we're all back. So thank you very, very much for your, your contributions in that. I'm now going to just ask each facilitator just to give me a two minute summary of the, of the discussion. So we'll start with T and H one, which is councillor Barbara Masters.
Right, thank you. Sort of a lot of the discussion was around buses and traffic speeding, as you might expect, the fact that sort of is it realistic for us as a lack to try to influence buses or because we have no money or no control over them because they're private enterprises? And, and Martin sort of explained about the work being done in Sheffield city region. And there is a consultation going out at the moment, but there are ways of using technology better to make it buses more attractive, but buses seem to be the way forward to reducing our dependence fee on cars, speeding traffic, whether sort of we could explore having sort of the 20 mile an hour zones as a default in the cities across the city, rather than sort of having neighbourhoods. And we'd like to know sort of the actual size of the neighbourhoods it of these, the zones, it would help to decrease the overall speeding of cars, even though without enforcement, people will still exceed 20 miles an hour. So it's getting that cultural shift. What's the cheapest way of controlling traffic speeds apart from getting motorists to behave themselves? So, and it was looking at sort of working with the police and seeing how we could influence that. Now, I'm looking sort of it's in, inconsiderate parking is a huge issue for all sorts of reasons. School and mainly around schools, around parks, parking restrictions prevent people using facilities, but maybe that's a case of where with better technology, we could encourage things like say car shares going for a trip to the park or somewhere to sort of decrease use of cars. And, and I think one of the comments was that Sheffield at the moment seems very hostile to motorists, whereas another person commented that our plan seems to accommodate the car too much. So maybe technology is the way forward. I'm hoping I've covered most of the issues, but it is revolves around buses, improving the public transport network and getting people to be more considerate, whether they're driving or parking, and how do we achieve that? Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Okay, CNH two councillor Joe Austin.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, so, yeah, we had some of the discussions, T H one, I guess. I think the, the themes I would draw out was buses, a lot of, a lot of discussion about buses, the importance of a, of a good bus network, the, the, the level of service to some parts of the area is, is, is not sufficient. And then if you have got the service reliability and the availability of the information on displays or by whatever means needs to be improved. There was some discussion of the, the, of the South Yorkshire consultation on the, on the enhanced bus partnership, which is an attempt to address some of these, some of these issues. And, you know, obviously we hope, we hope that that succeeds, or whether, you know, something more needs to be done in terms of franchising or whatever. Railway station, Dornetowny railway station, the, the, that corridor potentially is a route to expand the super tram. We had a bit of discussion about super tram, whether that was expansion of that was realistic, would certainly be desirable, but whether it's better to focus on bus services. We had a discussion, we had a quite a discussion as well about highways issues, how to get highways issues fixed. And, you know, what, what, whether this, this process we're offering to engage with the council through this forum is going to deliver the kind of, the kind of solutions to local highways, highways problems. And there were two or three mentioned in the meeting, or whether, you know, whether it's going to still going to be too difficult, and we're not going to, we're not going to deliver that. And so there's, there was therefore a certain amount of process conversation. Is this the right way to do it? How are we going to do it? How are we going to offer fruitful engagement in that sense, I suppose? You know, or do, or, you know, do people have to go somewhere else? There's some other ways to make that work. Lots of other, lots of other items, issues were raised. I think those are the main two. So if I've got two minutes, I'll have to stop there. Thanks.
Thanks, Joe. Okay, LE one, which is councillor Cliff Woodcraft.
Thank you, Chair. So we were looking at local environment. Better recycling was a major theme. Need to be recycling more types of, of items, metal foil, food waste. Big concern about still quite usable items being disposed of where they could be recovered and, and, and transferred to other parts of the city which are less well off. We're very, very wasteful. One suggestion that did come, come up, which I think is a bit of low hanging fruit was to make information available about what can be recycled and where that may well cover a lot of the things that at the moment we think are not recyclable for those people who want to, to take the journey to recycle. Getting to net zero, very important. Everything we do, we've got to think about that. Need to make sure we get into planning. It's no good. At the moment, just 10% of new properties being net zero. We've got to do much, much better than that. Need a vision for the southwest and all encompassing visions, an overarching vision. Better information on parks, open spaces to make it, make it available to, more accessible to people in the, in the city centre. So they know these parks are there like Wurlo Brook and the like. From a funding point of view, people are often willing to adopt a tree. And we need more toilets in parks as well as other parts of the city. Ditter is a problem and engagement with schools is, has been productive. And another issue with schools is parking, which I think will come up under, under highways as well. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Cliff. Okay, LE two councillor Tim Huggan.
Thank, thank you, Andy. So many, so many great contributions from the people in my breakout room. Thank you very much. Lots to go on with, but where do I start? Things like talking about action on schemes for our local shopping centres to, to, to encourage reduction of waste and, and, and better signposting for, in terms of, for where recycling is. Strategic placement of littered waste bins was one, one of the other things that was a particular, was particularly noteworthy to make sure of that. Obviously, we discussed the food waste recycling is always one of the things that we need to look at. Looking at, and then moving forward to not cover some of the other, other support that we've been talking about is, is talking about in the parks agreements and open spaces is that when, that we need to have enhanced assistance on bio, a better, or better assistance, any assistance actually, on, on biodiversity enhancement, as we've declared a, a nature emergency and how we can do that to make sure that we embed that, you know, in, in how we plan across the city. Sorry, sorry, everybody, I've missed so many things, but that will come out in the transcripts because there was so much, so much good stuff brought up.
That, thanks, Tim. Okay, C and N one councillor Colin Ross.
Okay, thank you. And it's nice to see many familiar faces in, in the meeting on, on the screen. And, and actually, that's part of the problem because one of the things that we discussed was engagement in the age profile in community groups because we were doing community and neighbourhood, and the need to engage with younger adults and teenagers as well, and how we crack this. And many of the community organisations rely on 60s plus who are becoming 70s plus or even 80s plus. So we need to think of ways of engaging other younger adults, you know, via social media or whatever, rather than the traditional ways that we've, we've done before. We talked about the response to antisocial behaviour and the speed with which we can get responses to reduce the crime with neighbours or even on, on the streets. And the need to liaise with police and housing and social housing, housing groups better. It's a difficult problem to crack that one, but, but there is, there are issues that we can do to improve the matter by we're engaging more people working on this from the council's point of view. What's just come up in, in one of the other groups as well, we talked about facilities to engage younger people as well. And it's not the traditional youth clubs perhaps of our, our past, but thinking of different ways of engaging with, with younger people as well. Fear of crime as well as crime itself, we talked about that. And again, working with people like the neighbourhood watch groups to find ways of making sure that people have the reassurance in their own homes, changing the locks on patio doors, mechanisms for shielding remote car keys and this sort of thing that could be done to reduce the fear of crime, as well as the outside environment, thinking about when we design new estates, walkways, pathways that, that you design out, you know, dark corners and various things like that, and making sure that that works. And also took the opportunity to promote the community network that's reaching out across the whole of the southwest of community now, the People Keeping Well initiative, which actually is, it's together a lot of community groups and started in, in S17, but was so successful, it's been expanded. And if you've not engaged with them so far, looking at the screen, it's a really worthwhile organisation to get involved with and, and getting different people and groups supporting one another. Okay, I think that's covered the main points. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin. Okay, C and N two councillor Sue Olston.
Thank you. So we've, we've had some sort of similar conversations, but we started off by talking about crime and the working with the police. So the importance of us working with the police and improving neighbourhood, the neighbourhood patrols, the neighbourhood teams, and also in the way that the police are able to communicate. People said, you know, they found some of the information they gave out very useful, but we're not sure how many people are aware of that. So that may be something we could work with them to improve. And we then went, that sort of linked on then with communication more generally, because we were talking about different groups within the community and how libraries, for example, can be used as communication hubs, sources of information for people. But obviously that access varies across the, the lack. And maybe that's one of the things that the lack could look at is how people from across the whole area are able to access information, both about events and organisations, social organisations within their area, but also about where to go when they've got problems, whether that's a sort of health related or finance related, for example. So, so support organisations. And so I thought that that was something that the lack could, could take on board. And also LinkedIn with that was around different ways of people communicating. So we've got all these new groups that have arisen over, you know, over lockdown periods. And maybe we should be trying to communicate and help people find information in different ways, because different people from different generations and backgrounds communicate, use different communication. And we also, like, I think Colin mentioned, we talked about trying to engage younger people in some of our community activities as well. And the fact that that is quite difficult. So maybe we could look at any ways we could do that. We then talked about, a little bit about our local shopping areas and whether there's anything we could do to support them. One of the things that came out of that was an issue around disabled parking. So we thought that a project that the lack could look at is a review of our disabled parking and maybe improving its signage and visibility. And we also talked about encouraging people to use cycles rather than cars and how we might enable, encourage that. And we also talked about issues with the buses, which you've obviously covered elsewhere. It was mentioned that we know that people often would happy to drive to somewhere where there's a bus if we could find somewhere suitable for them to park to easily access one of the, you know, one of the most frequent bus routes. So we did also talk about building and development, but mainly around the fact that we want to look at how any development in the area, whether small, large, has, takes into account the biodiversity needs of the area. And that should really be built in, we can try and pressure to get that built into our processes. And a couple of other issues were raised, which weren't directly on our list, which, of which the main one was around public transport and the need to support and improve public transport, and also around the issue of speeding, which I know was on the highways remit, but it is obviously something of significant I know was on the highways remit, but it is obviously something of significant concern across across our whole community. So I mentioned those. And I think that's more or less where we were. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. And last but not least, C and N3 councillor Mohammed Marif.
Thank you, Chair. I think the themes were similar to what councillor Ross and councillor Olston have alluded to. But one of the key issues that was coming out of our group was clearly that was there are a number of groups like Camagh, Crosspool and Crooks Forums etcetera that do absolutely wonderful work in the area. But communicating that work was an issue that the lack could potentially help with because they are communicating at the present on various different forums, like notice boards or through Twitter or through various print format. So that was one of the key issues that came out that communications of the work that is actually being done by the community groups could be identified to a wider audience and more effectively identified. So that was one of the key themes that came out of the work that has been done at present. And this has been obviously strengthened by the fact that the pandemic has bought something forward in terms of community groups being very needed in areas. And most are now that communities are working with each other and community facilities are obviously needed in that sense. The other areas that we picked upon was the lack of engagement from younger people, I think. One of the people actually mentioned that only 2% of the younger people actually responded to the survey that we just carried out. So that is quite a good example of not having a great deal of engagement. But the solution to that may well be that we do share community issues with school councils. There is also the youth parliament which exists at present as well, which could be used to engage with the younger people more than we're doing at the present time. And one of the key issues about the existing groups is they're well established, they've been run by people who've been running them for numerous years. And I think Colin touched upon that and it's a similar similar theme from our side is member sustainability is becoming an issue around that as well. And in places like Crooks where we need to engage further with the with the students etcetera. So that is another area that was that was touched upon. In terms of community groups themselves, we did mention the fact that some of them know each other, some of them don't know each other, but bringing them together to bring forward best practice might be something that can be helpful. So sharing best practice was was important. And one of the things that the other two group haven't actually mentioned, and it was mentioned in this group, was the lack of actual facilities that community groups and youth clubs etcetera can run from. Sorry, the youth club was another issue. That there is a lack of youth facilities in the area generally. But the the number of facilities that we have in the area is also a big issue because in the South West there are not enough council assets to facilitate community groups. And one of the solutions to that was maybe we need to look at facilities where we're bringing groups together so it becomes multi-use, multicultural use facilities. And maybe what we need to do to identify where this is needed is to have a a stocktake of facilities that already exist in the South West and see whether there is a lack of that. And maybe through the local plan, we look at identifying the need for community facilities and better community facilities to support the communities that are being built in these areas. And that was was touched upon. And another key thing that was picked up was although we may not have community facilities, which obviously we're going to be looking into, we do have things like play streets and apparently councillor Roger Davison is a bit of a keen person on play streets in Ecclesdale. So we could bring play streets into some sort of format that can that can work. So it's just bringing people together, which obviously helps in antisocial behaviour as well. I think I picked up on everything, Nick, but there might be something that you might want to add on to.
You covered it all there.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Marif. So lots of food for thought and we will make sure we, as I say, we'll I'll come on to the next steps at item seven, but item six is public questions. We've set aside in this last half hour for public questions. We've received two questions in advance, so I'll start with those. And then after that, I'd ask anybody with a question to use the raise hand function to indicate that they wish to ask a question. I will then invite individuals to unmute to ask their question and then to mute again. When you ask your question, can you please clearly state your name and which area of the lack you are from? If we are unable to answer any question tonight, we will provide a written response. If we run out of time, you can email your questions to southwestlack@sheffield.gov.uk. Okay, so the first question I have is from Cathy Rhodes. Are you able to ask a question? Cathy, can you unmute and ask your question?
Yes, I am here. I didn't realise I'd have to read it out. I'll just grab it on my email. But essentially, I was asking a question about nature recovery Sheffield and the nature emergency action plan, which we were hoping very much the council would be producing. We made the point in the breakout room that we really need that kind of concerted effort and leadership from the council, working with all the partners that are really keen to get involved in preserving biodiversity and improving the care of our green spaces with a very holistic approach, engaging with local groups who can get involved in the planning of how we care for our green spaces and actually engage with the doing of it. We all know how much that will help our wellbeing. So my question was, has there been a specific committee set up with an individual who's leading on this? And when do we expect the nature emergency action plan to be produced? As we sort of initially called for in a letter to the council several months ago.
I think my response would be that the council is still in the process of working of working on the NEAP, the Nature Emergency Action Plan. It's happening in parallel with a range of duties and responsibilities that sit at a Sheffield and South Yorkshire level in relation to the Environment Building, which became an act in November 2021. And the council was keen that the NEAP captures and builds on the great work that's already happening across Sheffield by a range of partners and hope to provide an update shortly on how communities can contribute. In terms of committees, I think as everybody knows, there was a referendum last year to move to committee structure. The council is due to debate and discuss that in the next coming weeks. So a committee structure will will be decided before before the before the the May elections and the new committees will will come in after the AGM in May. So you probably know a bit more about where where the nature emergency action plan sits sits at that point. Okay, can I ask Jan Fitzgerald to summarise her question, please?
Yes, thank you. Apologise in advance for bringing a very sort of specific question about a specific issue to what is a, you know, wide strategic discussion group, but we really had nowhere else to take it. And it is an interesting point about how the council works with local people. And so we've been emailing into the Parks Service about a policy that they recently introduced without, we believe, appropriate consultation to limit the size of fitness classes who pay a licence to to use parks. And they've they've limited it to a maximum of 30 people in the larger parks. It's a smaller limit in smaller parks. So I'm asking on behalf of my boxers eyes class that's run by Jazzy B Fitness Beth Blake, and we use Encliff Park and we have been using Encliff Park and other parks, Millhouses and Hillsborough in the last six years. But last few years, we've been in Encliff and our community is built up around Encliff Park as we've captured more and more people locally who want to join us. And we run the classes there on Monday and Wednesday in the evenings in the summer. And in the winter, we go to Greystone School and there's over 40 people in our class on a very regular basis. And clearly, parks have got to balance the needs of a whole range of users of the parks, especially busy parks like Encliff. And it's it's imperative that people don't cause a nuisance to each other. But in all the six years we've been running our class and enjoying our class, we haven't caused any nuisance. We haven't had any complaints about nuisance to park users or to residents. And yet parks have decided that we can't have a class larger than 30. And the number has been chosen out of the air, it appears. We don't understand why. We assume that they've looked at a range of information and evidence to underpin the new policy, but they clearly didn't look at the evidence that we've had a class running twice a week, every week for six years in the summers without any nuisance at all. And we've now been stopped from using it. And they, the reasons, they give us two reasons, and I'm nearly finished, that they give us two reasons why they won't change their mind after a range of email discussions, they won't speak to me on the phone. They said we need to balance these apart users and we said, quite right, but we've got lots of evidence to show that we're not causing a nuisance. And the second thing they say is, well, we've just changed the policy and we don't want to change it again. Well, that's not good enough, to be honest, because you didn't consult on it. And if you had consulted on it, you would have seen that we actually needed a bigger group and we wouldn't cause any problems. So I really think this is a good example of how the local area committee could re help rethink the way council officers work with local people. So instead of saying, this class is too big, it doesn't match our new policy, could they be encouraged to say, this class has clearly worked well for six years, it's really good for health and fitness, there's been no complaints, it brings us a revenue in licence fee, it's a great use of the park. How do we make that happen? How can we continue to make that happen? Thank you.
Thank you. And I think, you know, you raise a very good point and an issue which clearly you know, your group has been engaged with parks for a number of months and we've not had a satisfactory response. And clearly, I can't come up with a response on the hoof that's going to satisfy, that could satisfy a very question. So I'm looking to see if any colleagues have got anything you want to say. So councillor Shafak Mohammed.
Can I just echo the concerns that Jan, who is obviously a constituent of ours? In terms of, you know, look, one of the things that I was very keen say 10, 12 years ago, when we had community assemblies, was to actually empower local community assemblies to have more control over parks, library service and litter. And I think we need to move towards that because not all our parks are the same size. And not all our parks actually have the type of activities that take place, say, in Encliff or Millhouses. So therefore, I think it's a policy, absolutely what, in terms of what John's Anabah, that we should have some local control. And I have to agree with Jan, I've been a councillor here in Ecclesall since 2015 and prior to that, Broome Hill, which is on the other side of the river. And never ever have I had any complaints about community groups such as Jan's causing a problem. It's a big park. I want to see that park populated. I know what complaints I have had. That was during Covid lockdown with the volume of people and litter and stuff. But I think when it comes to these much more localised community groups, Chair, I think we need to take a very strong position from our South West point of view to say we want more control over our parks and this could be a policy area that we could have more control rather than one size fits all across the city.
Okay, thank you. I mean, in terms of, I will make sure that we get a response to Jan and I will work with Denise and the local councillors to facilitate discussion between Jan's groups and the Parks Department. Okay, right. So in terms of moving on to on to new questions, and I've probably seen them in the wrong order. But the first hand I saw was Richard Stora.
Very brief, and this will be familiar ground to you, but it's not to me. The Sheffield Plan is due out and has been due out sometime for a long time. Do you have any news on when it is coming out? And how we can address the very deep anxieties that some of us have about about green belt land and the fear that some of the green belt land may be encroached upon.
Okay, so that's a question about the development plan, which is the plan that sets out where Sheffield is going to build. How Sheffield is going to make sure the land is available for building new houses, but also make sure we have sufficient industrial land and land for retail. I understand that the committee that is dealing with that met this week. So I'm looking for colleagues who might be on that. So councillor Tim Huggan.
I can help you if you want.
Or councillor Martin Smith.
I'm not going to fight Britain. So Richard, the it's a really, it's a great question. It's a really complicated issue. The short version is a committee met, discussed and recommended what are called the spatial options. So this is not individual building sites, it's the policy of, for example, should we build in the green belt or should we build on brownfield sites in the city? That committee made a number of recommendations which went to the executive of the council this week. And there is a meeting on that in full council. It's, I believe it's in February, it may slip till March. What then happens is that that very broad brush policy gets converted with a process looking at specific sites. And then, I believe in about September or October, that list of potential sites goes out to a public consultation. I'll happily stand corrected, Tim, if I've got that wrong, but that's the short version. Richard, if you want to contact me on council email, I'll happily give you a longer version if you want.
Thank you very much indeed. Appreciate that.
Okay. Okay, okay. And I say, in terms of the timetable, we'll make sure that Richard gets a copy of the timetable because that's, you know, that's that's out in the public domain. Okay, the next one I've got is Deborah Enzambacka.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to thank you for allowing me to be part of this important process. And councillor Sanger had mentioned at the outset of this meeting that it's going to be important to identify any gaps in these policies and in this plan. So in terms of gap analysis, as someone who's taught stakeholder theories, stakeholder involvement, strategic planning and so on, I hope that we will ensure this is done. What I suggest is that we have a look at what stakeholder groups have not been have been underrepresented or, let's say, unrepresented in this process. We would also want to have a look at what is measurable. What are we trying to achieve that's measurable, that we can demonstrate progress on, that we can look at our objectives and, you know, just technically look at what resources we might need, what resources we have, how they're being allocated. So we have a system of sort of monitoring and evaluating how we're moving toward achieving our goals under this plan in very practical ways. So for example, if we're setting any kind of carbon targets or net zero, or if we're going to introduce or suggest policies are introduced to create more requirements of any one building in the area or even roads or transport companies or anything like that, that we track it and measure it. And then we also need to see who is going to be responsible to be monitoring and evaluating this whole plan. How is it going to be reviewed? What is the what is the actual timeline for revising it, reviewing it? What are the feedback loops inside of it? So is this going to continue to be a public process? Is this strategy going to be publicly communicated on a website and someone's going to be monitoring that and allowing continual feedback on it and inputs to the process? So I'm just suggesting those as practical measures on really how we can get maximum performance on what we're trying to achieve here. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Deborah. And I'm sure I'm sure Denise and Nick were listening to that in terms of making sure that we have a process that is inclusive. And clearly, as a council, we are committed to being open and transparent in terms of terms of this process. And the community plan will be a living document. Clearly, we want to have, as well as having, as we've heard today, themes, there's got to be things that are measurable. And we've got to be able to measure progress. But I think your, I think your points were very valid. And I say, I'll make sure that make sure that Denise and Nick take them on board. I think you're here a little bit in terms of terms of the summary at the end about where we go from here. Okay, the next, the next, the next question I've got is Jenny Priddo.
Oh, hi. I'm from Greystone, Ecclesall Ward. And I've been
And um I've been thinking about some of the themes that we've been talking about, like isolation, schooling, uh supporting small businesses, uh and I would add to that uh jobs and sick pay and all of that. Um, I'm not aware of one yet, but it would be quite good, I think, if the council had a plan for living with Covid, uh Covid nineteen. Now we're moving out of um restrictions or protections, whatever you like to call them. So it would be good to know about that plan to see what's happening. But I'm particularly interested about the impact it would have in our area um across the piece, really. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you. Thank you very much, Jenny. I mean, clearly, um, we most of for most of us, this has been the first time we've had a pandemic and responses. Clearly, there is a public health function with the council and Greg Fell has given a weekly update throughout the pandemic. Um, and that those will continue for the for the for the next few few weeks. Clearly, um, the Prime Minister made a statement last couple of days about about the speed of when we're coming coming out of uh uh out of the lockdown. But you're right, the city, the city will 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 need a plan and it will be communicated by by Greg Fell and and his team. Okay, and the final question I've got, oh no, I've got two questions. Um, uh Christopher Pennell.
Thank, thank you, Andy. Um, I find that my question has already been asked by Richard Stora, but can I just put a slight spin on it? Um, when uh just over a year ago, uh when the local plan for Sheffield was being considered, it went out to public consultation on an issues and options paper. Um, and at that time, the council was being asked by government to produce forty thousand new homes by twenty thirty nine. The big development since then is that governments up that total to fifty three thousand houses by twenty thirty nine. Now, I well understand what Martin has explained, councillor Martin Smith's explained, that the uh cooperative executive is safe and wide of views from councillors in all parties. But are they not going to ask the public how they react to fifty three thousand houses now being wanted on an issues and options basis? Are we not going to see anything until they've worked up their chosen solution uh in the autumn of this year?
Looking at councillor Martin Smith, I mean, I mean, I can start by giving a little bit of a a little bit of an answer um in the sense that the the paper that went to the cooperative e- executive did did did, um, you know, um, did al- already involve um feedback from a consultant that the council had brought in to 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 look at the requirement, Sheffield's requirement in terms of land use. So it 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 it's very much about saying, what do we need over the next eighteen years, rather than saying the government have increased the number by thirty five percent. It's about saying, what are Sheffield's needs? What what's it? What is the economic information that we have available? And 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 so that will be part of this discussion. But you're 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 right, Chris, it's it's something that will be coming back. But my understanding, and I'm looking looking for others, is is that i- is that once the council makes a decision, I say, we we we, as councillor Martin Smith has said, we're going to full council in February, March to talk about this. Um, once that put that decision has been taken, there will then be consultation with the public between that decision in February and when we come back for the next stage in September. Because, you know, agreeing a development plan for the city is an iterative pro- process. And we're at a certain stage and we need to need 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 to keep on. Um, the current plan we've had, it had is 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 very old and we've had a number of years where those of us on planning committee feel very um yeah, um, very frustrated that we don't have an up-to-date plan. So very keen that we have ha- we we are able to have a plan, but that there's a a clear process we need to go through. Is there anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, I I I just have one thing. Thanks, Andy. But um I thi- I think it's it's a matter of public record. The whole process is dragged on. Um, so this is a process that's taken the council nine years so far and there's there's a risk that if it drags on for much longer, the central government could step in and tell us what to do. And whatever the outcome of the consultations, whatever the people of Sheffield wants, we have to get that view fairly quickly, otherwise we lose the opportunity to govern our own or direct our own destiny. It's taken so long, somebody else could be imposed on us and say, this is the number of houses that you need and this is where you're going to build them. And that's it. That could happen, which is why we want to get this finished as quickly as possible.
Thank, thank you. Paul May?
Yes, hello. Um, I'd like to echo what councillor Corinne Ross said about the people sorry, the People Keeping Well initiative in the South West. It's the same area as the South West Lac. And so the question is, how does the LAC plan to work with the People Keeping Well group? Um, they've got some similar aims. So, for example, I know that they've just done a stocktake of facilities and amenities in our local area, which is in fact one of the things that one of the people tonight was talking about. Shouldn't we do a stocktake? Well, that's already been done by the People Keeping Well group. And it may well be that we can work very fruitfully with that group. So how are we planning to do that?
So we work very clear, I mean, a very good question, a good question. Um, we are working with um the people, the 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 People Keeping Well group, um, we're 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 on the steering group. But one of the reasons for having this meeting is is having a community plan that embeds um our our response to the People Keeping Well strategy i- in a community plan that we are we are then able to measure targets against, you know, you know, either every quarter or 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 every year. But but yes, um, isolated older people has been a key priority whenever we've had uh work going on in the South West. So um we're working, we're working with the group, but um you know, then our next stage is is to write the community plan. But, you know, I I know from my diary that there's a a meeting of 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 the People Keeping Well group next next Wednesday. So it it's ongoing, but it's really important that we that we we keep focused on that group. Okay, um, Alana Clark.
Hello. Yes, I suppose everything I've kind of heard about concerns about things like land use, pressure on environment, building more homes, green belt, all of those things seem to me to come down to sustainability. And the one thing that it seems to me that I never hear anything about is what is a sustainable population for this city? We seem to be committed to endless growth and that is simply unsustainable. You know, within the geographical area and, I mean, further apart, of course, in the world. You know, we cannot continue with endless growth. What does the po- does the uh council have any thinking at all about what is a sustainable population for this city?
That's that's and and another, another very important question. Um, I know, I I think I always say, I mean, we will get you a a written response, but um from from a the development plan point of view, um, there will be a figure of what the expected population of Sheffield will be in eighteen years' time. And that's why we need um the this development plan about how 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 we're going to do it. Because even if we were, uh, and and that has clear population uh predictions uh and also also jobs, because clearly Sheffield provides um more more jobs uh for 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 the wider area than rather than just just the population of Sheffield. Um, and one of the key drivers, as I say, we will get you a written reply from 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 planning. But one of the things is that over the last thirty years, house household sizes has continued to to get smaller. So even though, even though the number of people might not grow very much, the number of households has grown considerably. Um, I mean, partly that's because, you know, we have two excellent universities here, you know, fifty five to sixty thousand students. Um, but also uh other households have continued to get to get smaller as well. So that's one of the drivers why we need need to provide more homes. But I will get you a a a full response from 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 planning. Thank you. Okay, and final question, Robert Eastwood.
Well, thank you. It's just something that you said, I think, at the beginning, but all being well, Covid permitting, next meetings will be face to face. I just wondered if they would be zoned as well, as I think there there are quite a few members who would like to take part but can't because of various reasons.
Okay, I mean, that's a a really good point. I mean, I I I mean, from my my point of view, as somebody who's um been a councillor for, you know, uh thirty years now, I'm very keen that one of the things that's changed in the past ten years is is technology. And um the pandemic has brought out, you know, the the Zoom technology and the Skype and the and the Teams. So finding ways to engage people outside of outside of the public meetings is really important. Um, so so when we do have, the next meeting will be in public, but it will be webcast. Um, and we certainly need to find ways that we continue to engage with people. We haven't worked out the full details. Um, we're working across the the seven lakhs um to make sure that we have, you you know, we look at all the options. But it's been really good to have a have a a a a good show of people today. And we know that there are people who who will come to meetings virtually, who who would not go to a to a physical meeting. So I think it's a really good point and we will look into it and, as I say, keep everybody um informed about 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 the options going forward. Okay, I'm gonna I'm gonna call questions to to an end at that point. Um, so and move on to to item seven. So I mean, I'd like to thank you all very much for attending this online event. Um, our next step is to collate everything together, all the feedback, all the discussions from the group uh and to put together uh the final version of the community plan. Um, we'll be circulating a copy of of the current draft that was shared tonight uh with all of you and the other contacts that we have, um, we have, we we have in the community. Um, so uh another chance for you and your your colleagues and friends, neighbours to put your views to us by the end of February. Um, and then we will be bringing uh uh our our final plan uh for approval by by councillors uh to a formal meeting of Southwest Lac, and that will be on the the seventeenth of March uh at Taptown Masonic Hall. Um, and obviously, we don't know where we're going to be in terms of Covid, but we're we're optimistic that we will have uh a um a a a full meeting. Um, as I say, it will be webcast and we will pick up uh Mr. Eastwood's point about making sure that um we we continue to have an online presence. Um, can I thank you once again for your attendance and your contribution today? And I say, if you've got anything else to, other questions to ask, put them, send an email to 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 our our email email address. Um, but if you've got anything else that needs to go in the community plan, um, please let us know by the end of February. Thank you once again. Good evening.